Call the meeting to order for the J- [Music]
What happened? Oh.
Call the meeting to order for the July 25th closed session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
My apologies. The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Now it's time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. According to the agenda, you are about to meet in closed session to instruct city negotiators about the price and terms of purchase for property on Industrial Way in the city of Costa Mesa. From the address indicated, it abuts our corporation yard on Superior and is in fact an auto detailing body shop adjacent to the Carl's Jr., which is on the corner of Newport Boulevard. I personally have no idea what the city wants to do with this property. I don't even know if you're buying or selling. I don't know if you want to increase the city's presence in the auto detailing business, if you want to build a doughnut shop to compete with or complement Carl's, or possibly see this as a location for a tiny new police headquarters building, or a soup kitchen, or maybe just an investment opportunity. But I looked through the, searched through the city's previous minutes, the address has never been mentioned before, so I think the public has a right to know what the city's interest is in this is before you tell anybody what you think the proper price should be to buy or sell, whatever you're doing with it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Seeing none, perfect. Mr. Up, do you have a closed session announcement?
I do, thank you. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with the city's labor negoti- I'm sorry, real property negotiators regarding negotiations with Steve Springer and Jack McNutt regarding the property at 145 Industrial Way, Costa Mesa, California.
Excellent. We're recessed until 4:30. I call the meeting to order for the July 25th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Ms. Up, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no closed session report this evening.
Wonderful. Now it's time for the invocation by the Reverend Canon Cindy Evans for he is of St. James Episcopal.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the people of Newport Beach and for those individuals who serve in elected and administrative safety in key positions on our behalf. Inspire us all in ties of mutual respect which form our civic life. Grant us wisdom and vision to work for goals and purposes larger than ourselves and the zeal to carry our vision forward. We give thanks to our city's commitment to house the homeless in partnership with the city of Costa Mesa. May we discern additional resources for this purpose. And give us a spirit of light and fun these summer months as we continue to build a community worthy of the human family. Amen.
Thank you. Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to be moving on to a presentation in recognition of the outgoing board, commission, and committee members, I think. Can I get a slide up here for this? Nice. All right. We have a great little slide and we have a couple of committee members here. So Arlene Greer and Megan McNulty are here from the city's art commission. We're very excited to have you so that we can help honor the work that you've done for the city. It is an excellent civic service and we always ask everyone to start getting involved. This is a great place to do it. We also have Janine Eggers here from Assemblymember Dixon's office to present certificates. So if you want to come up, we'll do that and then we'll say a couple of words and then we can take a little photo.
Oh.
You're doing a great job.
My name is Janine Eggers. I am here above Assemblymember Dixon, who was not able to be here today, and she wanted me to make sure to thank Arlene Greer and Megan McNulty for their service on the Newport Beach Arts Commission. I have a certificate and I have a resolution for Arlene because she served 12 years on the Arts Commission and was the chair. So if I could present both of you, I could read these whereas if you want. Whereas, 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 whereas. But here is the-
Wonderful. Arlene, Megan, why don't you guys come up and then you can say a few words as well if you'd like to.
Oh, this is-
Well, I guess I have a loud voice, you can probably hear-
Us, Megan.
Hmm?
You're going to, you're going to talk on the mic to us.
Oh.
But they'll hear you, I promise.
Megan, on the side.
This side.
Oh, okay.
They are excited to see you as well, but we-
I've never talked on the mic before here. So anyway, I'd just like to say that I thought it was a wonderful experience getting involved with the city and anyone who hasn't done it, I recommend it. You definitely learn a lot and it's exciting to be involved in your community.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Newport Beach Mayor Blom and the Newport Beach City Council for the pleasure of serving you for all these years and those before you. It's been my greatest pleasure to serve on the city arts commission and to be connected with the community and working with Megan and my fellow commissioners. Thank you for that opportunity. I'm grateful and wish all of you the best of luck with the city and with the community and the arts in our area. Thank you.
It was our pleasure. Thank you. We're going to have a couple of words up here and then we'll move over for a photo in a moment.
I would just like to mention Tom Houston, I think he might hold the record for service in the community. He's been on the water quality committee for 30 years and has been on Balboa Island since 1954. He's a lifelong waterman, surfer and swimmer. I love the story about him swimming in the bay 30 years ago and he got out of the water and a councilman said, he said he's got an instrument moving forward with the Trash Intercept Project and he said, "I want to be involved." So he said, "I got a platform for you to do that." So Tom said his committee was the best civic service experience in his life. So terrific service and much appreciated.
Wonderful. Any other comments up here? Perfect. May we go take a quick photo by the flags? Megan, Arlene?
One, two, three, and one. Perfect.
For Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Now it's time for council announcements and oral reports from council members and the time for council members to throw an A1 item on for a future agenda. Councilmember Kleinman.
Thank you. A short report today. Councilmember Grant and I participated in the Sober Living Task Force meeting to update them on our state audit. And we also had a, an extremely informative aviation committee meeting last week with updates from Commercewoman Porter's office, the county supervisor, and airport director. Thank you.
Councilmember Stigeland.
Well, in the spirit of the Mayor Pro Tem's anniversary, I'll keep my comments short so we can get them home. I want to just congratulate the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce and Steve Rosansky for putting on the state of the county with Supervisors Wagner and Foley. I thought it was really well done and certainly, I think, 420 people. So it was a really well attended event. I think all my colleagues were there with me. It was great. And then I also just want to recognize the work the city's doing in our lifeguards during the busy summer months and public work, so let's keep up the good job, guys. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant.
Hi. A few things to announce. I was able to give a city update, an animal shelter presentation to the Exchange Club of Newport Beach. Wonderful organization. They meet regularly, do a lot of good work in our city. I also attended a friend raiser for the Balboa Island Historical Museum to celebrate the launch of their capital campaign. They're looking to expand and become a permanent group in our city, more permanent than they already are, and so I applaud their efforts. I was able to go to the groundbreaking that Hoag Hospital had at their Irvine campus, and it's very interesting to see the amount of investment that Hoag Hospital is making, not just in the Newport Beach community, but in the community in Orange County. They have a $1 billion, that was with a B, billion-dollar campaign going on right now to enhance medical services and providers throughout the county. And it's a really huge effort, but very well intentioned, and they did a beautiful job in their groundbreaking in, at the Hoag-Irvine location. And then finally, I was able to attend, actually last night, a screening of the Newport Beach Film Festival, Film Festival UK Honors Film. We support our film festival here in the city of Newport Beach and they have just entered into a very promising partnership with PBS and KCT, and those entities will be screening the films on TV and online. You can go online on the film festival website and find out when you can watch the honors program. But it's a really promising partnership that brings PBS and KCT into our family of partners here in the city of Newport Beach. So that's an exciting development as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wigan.
Yes, I was able to go out to my local park at Mariners on Friday and go for the minions were filmed and screened for all the families in the neighborhood. So I want to thank the Recreation and the Inter Service Department for being out there. There was a whole host of staff and they were out there until that movie ended past nine o'clock, so appreciate you guys being out in the community. It's a popular event. They do a whole series of movies throughout the town and there's a schedule and same kind of with the concerts in the park. It's fun to bring the community together and a lot of folks coming out for that, so I appreciate the hard work of staff on that. And then I saw Instagram posts yesterday and our fire chief is going to be in a RV cruising around in a demolition derby trying not to break his neck. I don't know if our insurance covers that or not, chief, but I think it'll be a pretty cool thing, but they're raising money for chalk and I've always wanted to. I'm a huge fair of the fan, but I've always wanted a demolition derby, so I'm a tad jealous, but I'm going to try to get my family out there to watch you smash hopefully some other local chiefs into smithereens, so good luck to you tomorrow night.
Councilmember Avery.
Thank you. I don't have much to report, other than I've been doing quite a bit of sailing on the harbor and the beer can races, the American Legion races, and also just wanted to give a shout out, because you see a lot when you're doing that on the harbor, in terms of, to our harbor master, Paul Blank, and his crew for just taking care of the craziness that's out there. Threw my old friend Duffy under the bus, but you know, the Duffys are the bogies you really have to watch out there. Usually involves champagne or Chardonnay, ten or 12 people all gathered together having a great time. So fortunately, they're going pretty slow, so, but they're managed and I've had a number of friends come through traveling on their boats and go to the harbor department and request a mooring over the radio, and they just said the staff was absolutely super helpful in getting onto a mooring, and sometimes that's difficult. A friend of mine just brought his large yacht from the east coast and came in with his wife and his captain, and the wind was on their side and they had a really kind of a tough time with it, and so they got straightened out by the staff there, so it was great. And he just made a, we were out to dinner the other night, just said, "What a great team we have down there," so, which I, we all know, so. But this is the, right now, the next month or so, it's all on, as things get even warmer and the water warms up and more people take advantage of August, so. End of report.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. So the mayor and I had a fun competition over at Cappy's for Make-A-Wish, and I'm not sure we're going to do it again, but it was, it was a lot of fun. We had a mac and cheese eating contest to fundraise for Make-A-Wish. Fantastic organization, so really appreciate Make-A-Wish and Cappy's for hosting. And then-
But it's not about who wins, Joe, clearly.
I did, I did make a prediction at the last council meeting, so I will say that prediction came true. And then the, I also was able to take a tour of some of the cottages that are going to be coming online soon from Crystal Cove. So a quick reminder for folks, city of Newport, Crystal Cove is within the city of Newport Beach. I know a lot of people think it's Laguna. It's not. It's Newport. And so we, we actually have partnered with them years ago because one of the things that they needed to do for grant fun, grant matching program funding is they needed to raise money. And so the city of Newport Beach actually decided to take the TOT, the transient occupancy tax money that they generate and kick it back in for, I think it was five years, somewhere around there, to help match that. And then we realized that by doing so and having the cottages come online, we'd make all of that back, I think in six or seven years or something along those lines, and then everything else is just increased revenue to the city through the TOT. And I like, I'm really happy to say, those are coming along really nicely. The delay and why it's taken so long, a couple of reasons. One is funding, but the other, which they are doing very well on, but the other is when you're doing historical renovation like that, you literally have to take brick by brick, board by board, and mark them and make sure that they get put back in the exact right place every time. It's a painstaking process, but they've done a really nice job. So I was able to take a tour of probably about the first half that are going to come online soon. The other half will come online in the next couple of years, so very excited about that. Couple of things on upcoming finance committee special meeting we've got tomorrow at 3:00 PM. It's not too much special about it, other than timing wise, we needed to have a meeting to talk about the water, water and sewer rate studies so that it can come to council in a timely manner, but we are having a special meeting tomorrow at 3:00 PM. We also have the, are you doing the police night out? Okay. And then we also have an upcoming Newport Beach Historical Society 100th Celebration of Lifeguards coming up in a couple of weeks. If you're interested in that, I encourage you to buy tickets. It should be really fun. And then, as Joe mentioned, happy anniversary to my wife. Oh, okay. I'll also real quickly cover, next, on August 1st, which I think is next Tuesday, yeah, next Tuesday, the Newport Beach Police Department is having National Night Out at Benita Canyon Sports Park at 4:00 PM. Really great event. Really appreciate the police department for putting this on, and I encourage everyone to come out, meet some police officers. They always have, it's a, it's a really good time, especially for young families. Thanks.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, please read the notes regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through nine. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilmember Kleinman, do you have any items to pull from consent or conflicts to announce?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I have none.
Councilmember Grant.
None.
Councilmember Wigan.
None.
Councilmember Avery.
I have none.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm going to be pulling item nine.
And I have a conflict based on real property interest of four Eldorado Lane on item three. Mayor Pro Tem, do you have a motion?
Ms. Brown, I, no amendments on one. Okay. So with a small amendment on item number six that is in our packets and then up front, and also with item number nine being pulled, I move the balance of the consent calendar.
Wonderful. We have a second. Second by Councilmember Kleinman. We'll now have public comments on consent calendar items, one through nine.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Number six is in part, the annual report on what are called the district annual report on the district discretionary grants, which for those who don't know is a $6,000 pot of money that each council member has to spend at their discretion each year. It's not totally at the council member's discretion because the expenditures that the $6,000 is spent on are supposed to have an identifiable public benefit, and the report is supposed to identify what that benefit was. I did notice the minor amendment that was made to this, which is present in the lobby, and I applaud the honesty of correcting who the donation was to, but it actually removed one of the very few items on the list that actually disclosed what public benefit resulted from the donation, which previously it said was to support the Independence Day Parade in the Mariners Park area. Now it just says donation, and there's like 28, 29 other expenditures that says nothing more than donation. That is not identifying to the public what the benefit of the donation to those organizations was and what the council member expected to achieve with the donation, so I hope in future years that we'll do better with this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on consent calendar items? Any other public comments? Bring it back here, seeing none. Seeing no other comments up here. We have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and take a vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance of the city council of city of Newport Beach approving an amendment to the Newport Village Plan Community PC 27 Development Plan to Allow Recreational Uses Within Area One. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Wonderful. We pulled item nine.
I did. I don't need a staff report on this. A couple of things. I did reach out to Debbie Snavely and Gary Sherwin on this item. Gary being the president and CEO of Newport Beach and Company, Debbie being the chairperson of Newport Beach and Company. Neither can make it today, so I asked a handful of questions of them. I thought they were worth just kind of giving answers to real quickly. For folks who are new to this, and I'm just, real briefly, we have, we have two kinds of tourist organizations. The first one is funded by transient occupancy tax, which is, we sort of reference as a hotel bed tax, it's 30, if it's a stay, less than 30 days, they pay 10% tax on that, and that goes into our general fund. We have a tourist organization, tourism organization, and 18% of the TOT goes to that organization. And as part of the agreement, they send us their, their budgets. And we have another organization that's called the Tourism Business Improvement District. That's a self-attest tax on top of the TOT, and they, hotels have to opt into that. The budget for the T bid is in item number eight. I pulled item number nine, which addresses the TOT side. Hopefully that was a quick explanation. So on the T bids, on the T bid side, I had asked a few questions, I'm sorry, on the TOT side, not the T bid side. On the TOT side, if anyone wants to follow along, I'm just going to point out the pages I'm on. Nine dash nine has their overall budget. One of the points that I had asked about was the nearly $200,000 in community relations. I'd asked what that was. The, I'd also asked, well, I'll get there in a second. The, the answer that I received from Gary was that as a community-based organization, we like to support events that make a difference in the city, including what's being done with the Hoag Classic to make them stronger and more brand building for the city that will help us with storytelling. I had asked, sorry, give me just a moment. I'd also asked about event marketing, the $275,000 that was referenced there. That is sponsorships of police and fire appreciation events, as well as Hoag Classic Film Festival, Wooden Boat Festival, and new volleyball tournament in October. It's apparently going to be coming, so I learned about that. And then I was going to ask a handful of questions about some of the goals and the metrics, because I did not understand them, but without them here, I will not ask them. And then there was also a discussion in the, in there about, and now I'm on page nine dash 32, there's a discussion about local community reimagined business units. There's a reference to imagine new ways to provide an umbrella organization for the culinary community. I did express concern that that sounded a whole lot like a restaurant bid that we, and I was going to suggest that it would be a good idea to have city council involved in this. The answer I received was, "This is not about setting up another restaurant association, which we are not doing or have any interest in, but catering for specific client and special events like boat parade or Marina Park." And then last, I just want to, this is more of a general comment, oh, I'm sorry, I had also asked Debbie about compensation, because she's on the executive board. And the reason I was asking about compensation, so both of the organizations that are referenced are, are nonprofits, and so you can actually pull the details of, from, you can actually pull up their IRS Form 990s. And I, so I had asked Debbie to get us a better copy of the, of the salaries and benefits, because one of the things that I know for, and this is, this is kind of a step back for a second, because all of the money that's going in is taxpayer money and it flows through the city, it's important for us to have really solid transparency when it comes to the money. And as this has grown significantly from even the time I got on the city council till now, we're looking at, you know, almost $7 million going to the organization, and then we're anticipating more than $7 million going next year. That pot of money is substantially bigger, and so all the more reason for us to have better eyes on how the money's being spent. So in our budget, we have a detailed line item where we actually know how much every single employee in the city is paid, and so do you. If you want to see how much our city attorney makes, it's right there in our city budget in the detail. Same is true for our police chief, fire chief, et cetera. Very, very easy to pull up. It's not as easy when you look at the budget to find out how much people are making at these organizations that are paid with taxpayer money, and so I had asked Debbie for more detail, and, and so I was going to, I'm going to be sending her over what our budget looks like, so hopefully they can send that back over. I would point out, though, ProPublica has published the IRS forms for a vast number of charitable organizations. every single employee in the city is paid, and so do you. If you want to see how much our city attorney makes, it's right there in our city budget in the detail. Same is true for our police chief, fire chief, et cetera. Very, very easy to pull up. It's not as easy when you look at the budget to find out how much people are making at these organizations that are paid with taxpayer money. And so I had asked Debbie for more detail, and, and so I was going to, I'm going to be sending her over what our budget looks like, so hopefully they can send that back over. I would point out, though, ProPublica has published the IRS forms for a vast number of charitable organizations. I encourage you to look at them before donating, just an FYI. But on this one, the, the ProPublica has the 2021 tax return for Visit Newport Beach, Inc., and it lists out the salaries and benefits for a number of the officers, directors, and trustees, as they are required to do in these Form 990s. The president and CEO is listed as receiving reportable compensation of $329,134, with estimated amount of other compensation from the organization, related organization of $69,406. Total amount is just over $398,000 to one person. And then it lists out a number of others. I would just point out, because this is important, I'd never seen this before. I had no idea that's how much money the CEO and president was making. That is literally more money than every employee in the city of Newport Beach. I think we need to have a conversation about that going into renegotiate contract negotiations next year. That, that, that we're going to need to probably have a little bit more of a detail, a discussion about salary and benefits when an organization that is receiving taxpayer money is paying more than, again, literally every employee in the entire city of Newport Beach. So that is not a knock on him as a person or the profession or, or what he's doing, but that is a lot of money. And I, again, I learned that today. So I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to absorb that a bit and figure out what our next steps are, but shock, it just, it just, it just surprised me. So like I said, that'll be something we'll have to work through, but I wanted to highlight that because that, frankly, that kind of detail should have been in the, the budget documents being sent to us, because as an oversight body trying to figure out what is going on with taxpayer money, that's what should have been in here. So we're going to have to work through that, and I'm sure we will be able to through an explanation of some kind, but I don't think it would be worth, it wouldn't have been okay to gloss by this without at least highlighting that. So with that said, I'm not going to do much with this other than to highlight that and just, you know, hopefully get that supplemental detail on the, on the budget that we could, you know, put in on some kind of consent, so we at least have it as part of the public record. And that's my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you for pulling that for discussion. I think it's very important, one for the public to understand that we are trying to look at all of these things and be good stewards of your money, and I also share the Mayor Protem's trepidation about some of these, these other companies that get a little out of control. So, we have any other council comments on this one? Seeing none. We'll go out to public comment on this item. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll bring it back up here.
Yeah, since I pulled it, I'll, I'll move staff's recommendation.
We have a second on that? Seconded by Councilmember Avery. Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously seven zero.
Excellent. Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Now would be the time for public comments on non-agenda items. Seeing none?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. No. Honorable council members, my name is Ryan Farsie, and I'm here to talk in regards to some developments in our city of Newport Beach. I had been going up and down the West Coast from California to Oregon to Washington, speaking in regards to the homeless situation that was developing back in 2018 and 19. That situation is much worse now as a result of the pandemic. And as a result of the pandemic, there are more billionaires now in California than there were before, even though a lot of them are leaving. But at the same time, there's a lot more homeless people. So now the city of Newport Beach is seeing the homeless people here as well. Right around the corner here, my fraternity brother Donald Bren's fine flagship Fashion Island model here of a perfect, perfect life, perfect world, but we do have homeless people camping out here. And so my question is for this council, is what is your, what is your plan of attack to, to resolve something like that? Or, you know, in other cities in the county, they had allocated low-income housing or even homeless shelters. I know maybe something like that is not something you want to discuss in Newport Beach, Mayor Protem O'Neill, but it is something that you should think about because it's only going to get worse. So the more they learn about where they can camp and how they can get around the rules and how Chief Lewis's people can do nothing about it, is, is going to lead to more homeless people coming into the city of Newport Beach. Twenty years ago, 30 years ago, when I was going to USC or Uni-Hi in Irvine, the police would just get the homeless people and they would escort them out of the city of Irvine or the city of Newport Beach and just take them outside the city line and drop them off. That's not the case anymore, and there's going to be more and more of them coming. The state of California, because of its weather, is more suitable for homeless population. In Oregon, they're giving the homeless people money on a monthly basis, $1,000. They don't care how they spend it or whatever they're doing, whether it's drugs or needles or whatnot. So that's my question to the city council here and the new city council members. I haven't been here in a couple of years. What is the plan of attack for a city with an average median home price of $2.5 million? What are we going to do about the homeless situation that's going to be developing? Thank you.
Any other comments on non-agenda items? Please step up now if you plan to. Okay, we're going to move on to the public hearings. And ten is resolution number 2023-42, appeal of limited term permit for the Aeronautics Ford Soil Vapor Remediation. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Blom, city council.
Actually, before we get going, are there any ex-party communications that the council members would like to disclose at this time?
I spoke with Ford's consultant.
I spent with Ken Connor with WSP.
I also had a com, a video Zoom conference with the consultant.
I received an email but didn't do anything with it. I had met with Ford and their consultant prior to on a water board, quality board issue that they were having a forum on way before this, so just letting that be known.
I'm guessing all, all of the ex-parties were at the request of the consultant. Mine was, so I met with Mike Barnes and Ken Connor from WSP USA Environmental and Infrastructure.
Okay. Staff?
Very good. Thank you. Jim Campbell, you're Deputy Community Development Director. We're going to provide a presentation here. Jenny Tran's going to go forward with that, and it's going to be a brief presentation, just going over kind of the, how we got here. We're going to go ahead and then turn it over to the applicant, WSP, and their presentation. And this is an appeals. We have three residents who have filed an appeal on the decision of the planning commission. First of all, you know, I think everyone involved with this case recognizes the need for this facility. You know, we do have some vapors coming out of the soil underneath the community that need to be addressed, and I think everyone has an interest in getting that done. And it, ultimately, what we're really talking about here is a small storage shed. It's about 240 square feet and where it's located, and that's really the focus of this entire appeal hearing. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jenny to do a brief presentation, kind of showing the project, and then the applicant will step in and do a little more detailed presentation on what it is, the need for this facility. So, thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Blom and council members. My name is Jenny Tran, and I'm the planner for this appeal of the Aeronautic Ford Soil Vapor Remediation Limit Term Permit. Just to provide some background, this area in blue is where the location of the former Ford Aeronautic Facility was, and at this facility is where the main operations was for aerospace research and development. The subject property we're looking at today is the area in red along Bison, which is the Bay Ridge Park Homeowners Association. During the operation of the Ford Aeronautic Facility, volatile organic compounds or VOCs were used during operations. This was common at the time. In the 90s, the facility was decommissioned and demolished. Remediation and monitoring of groundwater took place, and the area was rezoned for residential. In 2016, the water board's environmental screening levels were updated. This update caused the levels of VOCs detected to be above and noncompliant with the screen levels, and further remediation is required. This facility map shows the area that we're looking at, which is the area adjacent to 94 Hartford Drive. As stated, the treatment system building relocated adjacent to the resident at 94 Hartford Drive. So the project is for a soil vapor extracted and treatment system to remediate the presence of VOCs. This consists of 13 extraction wells, 2,400 feet of piping, and a 240-square-foot treatment system building, which is housing the equipment and treating the VOCs in the building. This is for a limited term permit for a duration of 12 months specifically for the location of that treatment system building. As you can see here, as previously stated, this shows the location of those proposed wells and piping, as well as the location of the treatment system building within the community. So this area has a development standard that requires an eight-foot separation from main residential structures, as well as a five-foot setback requirement that's measured at the back of sidewalk. The proposed location is three feet from 94 Hartford Drive, and it is abutting the sidewalk along Country Club Road, and this limited term permit allows a deviation from these requirements for the limited duration. And again, this shows the planned view of 94 Hartford Drive and the location of the treatment system building, which is three feet from the resident. A noise study was provided to ensure that the treatment system building will meet the noise standards as part of the municipal code, and the exterior siding of the treatment system will be designed to match the, the existing residential surrounding buildings. Further, it will be landscaped to ensure that the visual impacts are softened from the location of the building, and once the building is removed, it will be revegetated to the prior conditions. This item was first seen at the zoning administrative level where the resolution was adopted on March 2nd, 2023, and was subsequently appealed to the planning commission on March 14th. At the planning commission level, the resolution was again adopted on June 22nd and subsequently appealed to city council on July 5th. This appeal filed was in concerns to the safety concerns relate to the location of the treatment system building, and six factors of concern were cited in the appeal. These concerns will be further touched upon by the applicant's presentation. Staff is recommending to adopt resolution number 2023-42 to deny the appeal and uphold and affirm the planning commission's approval of the limited term permit. Thank you, Mayor Blom, and council members. I'm available for questions as well as the applicant.
Wonderful. And we have the applicant, the applicant here as well as the applicant. We're going to give the applicant 10 minutes to speak first.
Thank you very much. My name is Ken Connor. I'm a senior vice president for WSP Earth and Environment tonight. I also have Mike Barnes here, who's the project manager from my group. We also have Jessica Law, who is the, the regulatory manager for the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board for this particular project. And we also have Enrique Sanchez and Gail Weinberg from the HOA. The key points, some of which Jenny just spoke about, were that the LTP was needed due to the aesthetic issues of the setback. The space is very, very limited in this particular development, as it is in many developments like this. The HOA's input was considered, but the engineering implementation and the power availability determined which location we ended up using. We looked at many potential locations and narrowed it down to seven that were vetted even further. Of these seven, only one of them meets the needs for the project. WSP Ford has performed extensive community outreach throughout the program during the design phase, during the, the comment period that comes with providing the design, and also now during the implementation phase. Most important, this project is needed in an urgent manner because there are 22 homes that are being impacted right now. There could actually be more because not everyone has opted to take the indoor air sampling. And the SVE, the Soil Vapor Extraction System that we're looking to put in, is the only remediation technique that could address the risks that are involved to these homes that are happening as we speak. One last item that I'd like to mention is that the main appellant no longer owns the property at, at 94 Hartford. This is what the area looks like and, and the main area. These are actually the impacted residents that are involved with this, so it is quite an impact across this particular HOA area. This is what the system will look like. All of the piping that we're looking at is PVC piping in order to carry the vapor from the soil, from the extraction wells. It's only in the building that we're looking at that will actually be treating that soil vapor, and that is the exhaust point for what's happening in the treatment, and that is what we would consider to be the point of compliance. This gives you an idea of the analysis that we went through, including what the impacts were for various aspects of, of the project. We did a location analysis for the electrical connection that really has driven what we're looking at as far as the placement of this particular building on the back of 94 Hartford. There really is only one location that SoCal Edison has given us that is, is to be used, and it's actually across the street on Country Club Drive. So we're trying to cut down on the amount of, of, of problems that other people would have by not having this electric conduit, electrical conduit, go through each one of the affected areas. Our locations analysis, we looked at the disruption to the neighborhood, the power connection complexity, the permitting complexity, the implementation, which really proved to be one of the most important factors. The proximity to homes and the impact on parking was the last thing that we were really looking at. I, I won't go through each one of these because of the time that we're looking at, but I, I just want to make sure that we all understand the HOA is here and is representing tonight. The LTP is really the sole responsibility of WSP and Ford. The HOA, as the landowner, will be managing the permit, be looking at the permit, but it's really being managed by us at WSP. The HOA had significant input on the terms and conditions of the uses of the HOA's land. This is normal because they do own the land. But the determining factors were the engineering design, whether or not we could implement it, and whether or not there was power available. Right now, where we stand in the process is we're at the city of Newport Beach on the LTP side of things. There are a few other permits that we're looking to get from city of Newport Beach, but the next permit that we're looking after this one is the permit to operate from the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And that's really where most of the health and safety issues will be addressed, whether or not we meet their criteria for the way the building is put in place and what the exhaust is from the building. The construction date in order to start this process of, of remediation is reliant on obtaining all of these permits that are listed above. We've had extensive project community outreach going back five years, in, in five and a half years now. For this particular project, we, we've had numerous public meetings, including 25 public meetings for the overall side of things, but we have the listed specific public meetings for Bay Ridge Park. We also have monthly email updates for the Bay Ridge Park residents. The work notices that we have are distributed via US Mail one week prior The work notices that we have are distributed via US Mail one week prior to the work happening. We also have 24 to 48-hour phone notice when working in front of homes. We also provide all of this information on our project website and a toll-free hotline. And we also provide a community relations advocate during construction and one-on-one briefings with residents as necessary. So, our outreach has really been robust throughout this entire project. The community feedback that we heard when we were going through this was questions about safety, which we had addressed with the design of the building, the location, decision-making, that we also had addressed by showing how we had gone through the process of looking at that. We also were providing the timeframe of remediation. Some of the questions that we received were, "How long will this have to run?" There were also questions regarding quality of life, on the noise, aesthetics, parking, and proximity. As you can imagine, when there are 22 homes plus that are being impacted, maybe even more, there really has been a community support for this. Some of the individuals are listed here, but in general, for those groups that are being impacted, they're looking to have the Soil Vapor Extraction System be put in place with a sense of urgency because they want to get their lives back. Right now, they have mitigation measures that are placed in their home for air purifying filters, which are noisy, which are cumbersome, which are difficult to deal with in small locations. So, they really are looking for this remediation technology to be placed in place. So, thank you very much. I'll take any questions that you have regarding this particular situation.
Wonderful. I think first, we're going to hear from the applicant, and then we can go ahead and address some council questions from there. We'll also give you 10 minutes to speak as well.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Solomita, and unfortunately, my wife couldn't make it. She's watching the little one, and that didn't work out so well last time. He was running around a little bit. I did want to start out by saying, yes, we're not the owners anymore. We did sell it, and I wanted to say, it's not always nice feeling like you're forced out of your home. Wasn't going to bring that up, but since it was brought up, I'll start by saying that. Our first home that we bought and brought our first kid home to. That'll get started. So, when we first asked for a lot of examples and a lot of data regarding the treatment system that they were putting up, the three examples they gave us for a residential area was a dry cleaners that was approximately 500 feet away from residence, another dry cleaners that was approximately 100 feet, and then the Fort Ord military base housing. And I believe we have the picture of that. That is the example of a residential area for them. It was shut down in 1994 due to toxic contamination, and the treatment center wasn't put in until 2004, 10 years after it was completely shut down. So, I wouldn't exactly call that a residential area. As for the infeasibilities, the alternative analysis that they provided us when we asked why this can't go in any other position and any other spot in the community, originally, all we heard up until January was that it was due to parking. We kept hearing, "Oh, parking, parking. That's why it has to go behind 94 Hartford," our previous house. After we put in our complaints and asked why parking is being put above safety, we were sent this, the alternative analysis, and it came up with a bunch of different However, parking is still the issue with options number one and three. And then, after we had the community meeting on June 8, for some reason, now if we change to any other location, it's also going to take two, two and a half years to relocate. And that wasn't brought up prior to that community meeting. Just to, I mentioned this at the last meeting, infeasible, I don't want to talk down to anyone. Definition is not possible to do easily or conveniently, and the only reason I put that up there is because in this, infeasible seems to mean impossible, and I just wanted to point out that that's not what it means. Just because it's difficult doesn't mean it can't be done, and with someone like Ford and WSP, I think they can overcome some of these difficult issues that they face. Also, it's not, I said it in the previous meeting, it's not our job, but it's not the new owner's job. I'm here talking for them now. It's not their job to take the burden to make it easier for Ford and WSP, for Ford especially, the ones that created this issue in the first place. Some of the other areas that they wanted to put it in, that they looked at for the alternative analysis, now, I know it isn't your decision to decide where it goes. We're just deciding if it's going to go behind 94 Hartford. I'm just trying to point out that there are other locations that it could be placed in, and that it seems like every time we sent in complaints, they were trying to find out more reasons why it should go there, even if they found out more infeasibilities, why it couldn't go behind 94 Hartford, they ignored those, but there were more infeasibilities for the other locations. One of the issues is it's approximately, there's 40 feet in between the retaining wall and the roadway on Bison. They said this would somehow impede on the moratorium, where there can't be any construction, digging on Bison, but I'm kind of confused why a 20-foot-by-10-foot building would somehow obstruct the roadway in this situation when there's 40 feet of room. One of their main issues was that it could cause issues with the integrity with the retaining wall and because of the slope. I find it hard to believe that there's never been a shed put on a slight hill next to a wall before. And then also, the city is in charge of the moratorium. I don't know if it's possible for them to kind of waive it since it is public safety in mind, but that's just one of the locations that was possible. This is on the corner of Bison and Country Club. It's same reasons, possible that slope and then possible issues with the integrity with the sound wall, or the, sorry, not sound wall, but the retaining wall. Now, these are the ones that were turned down due to parking. Some of them I would agree with, like the picture on the bottom right, that would just be passing the buck to the people at those residents, and I'm not trying to do that. That's kind of the "not in my backyard" mentality, and that's not what this is all about. One of them that is not pictured is Brittany and Hartford, this little triangle island here. This was deemed infeasible due to parking. Real quick, I went out and took measurements. If you put a building there, there's two spots right there and three spots on the right side of the island. If you put a 20-foot-by-10-foot building there, you could park two cars parallel with it. You're not losing any parking spots. On the other side, if they needed a little bit more room for the building, I would understand, and you put it there, you take up three spots, and have two parallel parking spots right next to it, you're taking up, you're losing one spot. And then if you want to reconfigure the whole thing, put the building right there, you'd have to remove a tree and relocate the mailbox a little bit, about 10, 20 feet. You're not losing any spots because you could put five parking spots right there, and you can even possibly gain two spots by putting it to the left and the right of the proposed building. Again, I'm just pointing out that there are other locations, and I know one of the locations was due to the electrical power drop, which would be in the far northwest corner of the community. I don't think that that would be an issue here since there's three wells that are pretty much triangulate that island right there, so I don't understand how the electrical power drop would be an issue there. This is the proposed location. There's not a lot of room there. I know there was supposed to be eight feet. There's three feet of separation between the building and the shed. It's supposed to be five feet away from the sidewalk. It's on the sidewalk pretty much. It's too close to a water main. They originally wanted it, I believe it was, I can't remember the exact, a few feet south of where it is now, but it had to be moved due to finding where the exact location of a water main was. And now, in the prior meeting, or two meetings ago, they said they were already compromising, the city was compromising on that, calling it a compromise for how close it was to the water main. So, it's too close to the house, too close to the sidewalk, too close to a water main. Some of the other locations were deemed infeasible because you're removing mature vegetation or landscaping, and here, you're taking out a pine tree that's 50-plus years old, possibly two pine trees. You have to remove, move the air conditioner for 94 Hartford. It's going to be on a slab, and then, like I've mentioned before, no SVE systems have been this close to a residence. Like I said before, the closest one they had was a dry cleaners that was 100 feet, or the abandoned military base. And I wanted to finish by saying, I know they keep saying there's these 22 residents, their public relations person reached out to them, tried to get letters from them. I think they got four letters from them, saying that basically, "We're wrong. We're to blame for all this somehow." And I don't believe any of them are here, or any of them were here last time. And also, that I don't think Ford actually offered to relocate them. If safety was such an issue for them being in this house right now, why are they in the house? That's it. Thank you for your time, and any questions for me?
Wonderful. I think we'll start up here with council comments, and I'll call you guys back up if we have any directed questions for you, but thank you very much for your time and the PowerPoint. I'm going to bring it back up to the dais. Any comments on this side? Questions?
Yeah, I'd like to know from the applicant, an explanation of the process of cleaning the extracted gases. So, if it is that close to the residence, you know, what is the danger to them? What is the, what air is emitted once it's cleaned? What do you do with the, is there a solid that's created from the extraction that goes into, you know, can you explain that process for me?
Yes. The method that we're using is carbon, that the material, the vapors that are coming from the extraction wells are combined together in a manifold process and fed into the front part, or one part of the building, to go through a blower, which is causing the vacuum to begin with on the SVE side. And then after the blower, on the positive side, that is pushed through two carbon filters. And that carbon, depending on how much material is taken up, and by our calculations, it really won't be that much as far as mass, but that carbon would be changed out on a regular basis once it had reached its effective treatment capacity at that time. So, there's actually a duplication, a repetition there in order to provide another level of safety, to have the second carbon vessel after the first one, in order to make sure that we are getting to the levels that the South Coast Air Quality Management District will find acceptable for the exhaust coming from the building. And I also want to point out that it isn't all of the building that is of concern, it's only the exhaust coming from the building. There's no other location where any vapors are coming out. It's just from that exhaust, which is going to be a certain number of feet off the ground according to the district permit that we'll be going for, and also 15 feet away from any window or opening in a residence. And again, that's also going to be part of the permit.
And the appellant had some examples, you know, dry cleaners and this military base. Do you have any examples that weren't mentioned in that that are being used, you know, that are this close to residences?
Very good question. So, there are literally thousands of these locations. It's unfortunate that the only ones that the appellant brings up are the three that we've given upfront, just as a matter of providing information upfront. If we spent a very large amount of time, we could pull permits to show other operations near homes, other operations near buildings, but the key question that has kept coming up from this particular appellant is the location of the building toward the building. It's not whether or not the exhaust that's coming from the treatment system is X number of feet. What I would say to that is that there are thousands of examples of the exhaust side of it. In many cases, we don't go into that, into that kind of research, because we're having to prove these points of safety to the Air Quality Management District.
When did you, did you find out about the sale of their home recently, or did you know that that was?
Yes. Yes, we had known about that when, I guess it's public knowledge online now.
Was there ever any thought in your team to say, "Why don't we create the facility inside the home instead of building it, since it was for sale, and make the purchase yourself"?
It really wasn't a thought at that point in time because of what we had been talking to the regulatory agency, and because you restart all of the permitting side of this, which could go on for a very, very long period of time, and it would not render it any safer than what it is right now.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Thank you all for your presentations and elaborating on this very difficult issue. I want to start with saying that, you know, it is of great concern that we have any amount of residents, one or more, that would be uncomfortable with the placement of this facility, and, you know, it's our duty to make sure that we're vetting it properly, and so I'm, you know, glad that we're having this hearing so that we can, you know, vet these issues and work through because it is very complicated, and, you know, number one issue in my mind would be the safety, and I realize that there's been quite a bit of work to assess the safety and make sure that the safest possible procedures are being followed, and that's very encouraging. I have a number of thoughts, and maybe I can just like rattle them off, and we can kind of go through them. Working from what council member Wagen mentioned, I'm curious about the applicant and now, who no longer owns the property, and this new property owner. Have you had any sort of connectivity with the new property owner? Are they also objecting in some way, or what's happening with that process?
So, we have had, we have reached out to the real estate agent that was on the side of the new property owner, and it was our understanding that they were not available for any discussion. They were out of the country, and just picked up the keys today from what we had heard. So, we have made attempts to reach out and provide information. We also know that as part of talking with both the real estate agent on both sides, that it was disclosed fully that this situation was going on.
That was my next question. So, you have confirmed that there was a disclosure made by the real estate agent or the previous property owner?
Correct.
Okay. I want to talk a little bit about the other sites, because there seems to be a lot of maybe disconnect between what some of the residents believe to be better sites, including the testimony that we had here today and the reporting that has gone on. Can you elaborate a little bit about, you know, I hear a lot about the city moratorium and maybe putting it into the City of Ridaway, where it wouldn't impact homeowners so much, it would be more adjacent to a public it would be more adjacent to a public, you know, street or right-of-way. Can you talk a little bit more about the process that went on to vet those ideas?
Absolutely. First of all, keep in mind that we actually had started this process sometime at the beginning of COVID. And that many of the, the institutions that are involved, including SoCal Edison, it was really difficult during the, the COVID time period to get their attention, to get a, a meeting or appointment with them. So it literally was within the last 14 months that we actually got information regarding the power drops. And it was at that point in time on the power drops, that it became clearer and clearer regarding the other, the other alternatives that we had been looking at. It was becoming clearer and clearer that the power drop was going to have an incredible effect on where the building would have to be. So, for example, when we're talking about the moratorium side of things, it isn't so much where the location of the building would have been in relation to Bison. It was the idea that the power would have to cross Bison in order to go to that particular power drop. And there isn't a way for the location that we've, that we have right now for the power drop. There's no way to get from there to a building location over at Bison without a lot more pulling up of not, not only right-of-way and walls, but also going through the neighborhood itself with the electrical conduit, which is very large because of the distance that we're having to go, because of the voltage drop across the distance. So either you have access to a power drop on the other side of Bison, and have to cut across Bison, therefore having the problem with the moratorium. But it wasn't that the location of the building was, was having difficulties with the moratorium on Bison. It was really the idea of getting the power to the building there.
So is that, so that's something that's in the city control, or you're saying that that?
Very good question. So the moratorium side of it is in the city's control. But because the power drop, even on the other side of the street on Bison, would have caused us to delay this even further, because there wasn't even enough energy there at that power drop. Even if we had had a situation where the power was, was enough for us to draw upon it, we wouldn't have been able to cross Bison with, with the power. But even that location did not have enough energy at it, and that SoCal Edison would have to upgrade at that location, which they had been planning on doing for a while, but hadn't done so far. But it would have caused this to be delayed even further.
Okay, so, okay, let's go back to the individual residences and the individual property owners that are objecting. So I'm curious, we have four property owners listed in our packet. I don't know, maybe that's a married couple or something that's in one. I don't know if there's three or four residences that have signed on to the appeal, but whatever number. I do understand that many of the residences already have vapor intrusion, and that there's some sort of remediation, as you mentioned, going on. Are any of those residences that are subject to the appeal, have they been measured and encountering the remediation? Are they the ones that said, no, we don't want to be measured? You know, what, what's the facts related to those three, those three residences?
So for the appellant at 94 Hartford, that particular appellant had had, prior to them moving in, the owner before them had had the indoor air testing, and they had not shown that there was vapor intrusion. You also have to keep in mind, you also have to keep in mind that they're on the second floor, and that they have a garage underneath them. So the vapor intrusion mechanisms would not be as pronounced, even if there were a, a situation going on, that vapor was coming up from the sub-slab. It would be very unlikely that it would reach the second floor.
And what about the other two?
The, the other two, I'm not sure Mike can, they're all on the second floor. So I'm, I'm not sure about the, the testing side of things. But I do know that that really does add a safety factor with respect to the vapor intrusion.
Because it just stays in the garage?
Right.
If, if it's occurring?
Correct. And if even just one opening of your door, you know, once every week or so, will clear out whatever is there.
Okay. And there's been some conversation here and in our packet about the, how many, how many homeowners are there? How many homes are there in the entire development?
Is it 167? 168?
And of the 168, you have the, I would say, what, acquiescence of the homeowners association, support of the homeowners association, and how many of those individual homeowners for the location that you are proposing it at?
As far as a vote regarding this, do we know?
I don't know. I don't know if they had a vote, or did you have some sort of communication with individual homeowners, or if they suggested support?
So each one of our public meetings, some of which are directed toward the actual design and the placement of, of where the, the building is going, we had overwhelming support regarding this. If there were detractions from that, it was usually for a person that was saying they didn't like the aesthetics of what the building was going to look like, or was some other, other issue. But the actual project itself seems to be overwhelmingly supported by the group.
Okay. And then, I guess I'm a little curious, maybe this is extending the conversation, and these questions you can't answer, but I'm a little curious. I mean, there are other, the entire Ford plant was a much larger, this is just a piece of a much larger original parcel.
Correct.
So what are we looking at down the road, even after we get past this particular milestone? One Ford Road and the other communities that are surrounding, have we started to measure there? Are, are they measurable? I mean, are we going to be looking at this sort of, you know, discussion again, you know?
Yes. So what I would say, this is probably the most investigated soil vapor system, soil vapor issue, vapor intrusion issue in the United States right now. And we have gone from each parcel at, at the direction and at the guidance of the Water Board, in order to make sure that we are getting a, a complex and an overview of what's happening at the site. And because the facility was large, and because of the differences in groundwater flow direction over time, and even the, the migration of the soil vapor plume itself over time, we've done an extensive amount of investigation in not only this location, which is by far and away the highest of the vapor concentrations that we found, but in the other pieces, the, the other HOAs, the other parcels. So we, we have done that. And there are other actions that we will be looking at for SVE in some of the, the other parcels. Some of them don't rise to that level yet, but we're still doing investigation to make sure that we have a complete picture of what's going on.
So do you think, or do you even know if the increase in the amount of, you know, disintegration of this particular site is more related to the actual movement? Is that why we are getting the information that it's only going to get worse? Or is it more about better, and I did see some suggestion that there's better testing available, or there's maybe more rigorous standards? Like, what, you know, there is mention that if we don't do this now, it's only going to be a lot worse. Like, can you expand on that?
Sure. The, the whole mechanism behind the vapor intrusion, and what promotes the risk factors to go up, is the co-location of the vapors themselves. In fact, not all of the sub-slabs have vapor intrusion issues. But sometimes it's because a slab settles, or cracks develop, things of that nature. But what I want to say is, the reason why the risk goes up is because you know that vapor intrusion is happening, and it's also a long-term exposure issue. That the more you can do in order to stop the exposure, which is what we've been trying to do with these air purifying units in those 22 homes, and, and some of the other homes that were on the edge of the plume. But the more you can do to stop that pathway, or to remove the concentrations, the better off you are in reducing the risk. It's the very fact that the safety is completely based on the presence of the vapor in, in the subsurface, and in the Vado zone, that zone from the top of the ground, all the way down to the groundwater table. As far as why this particular area is higher than others, it might have something to do with whatever the location of the release point was for the contamination to begin with. It could also be because of the, the movement of the groundwater over time, which, which has changed based on, on certain issues involving rainfall, involving differences in even the construction, and the, the stormwater recharge through the area. So, yes, the reason why we're doing this is because of that mechanism is known within at least those 22 homes. And the more we allow this to continue to happen, the greater the odds are, the greater the risk is, that there could be a, a long-term exposure problem.
Okay, just one last question. Not talking about this project, but at the original subdivision of this property, maybe you know this, or maybe you don't, and in sales that occurred just over time, including now, I'm assuming that there was disclosure that this was a former cleaned-up site, and that when people bought in, that they understood that there was contamination that was remediated at that time?
That is our understanding, you know, regarding, regarding the site over time, that whenever the plant stopped operating, and then there was the actual redevelopment within that area, it was our understanding that this would be part of the disclosure process, that this had happened. Let's keep in mind that when the plant really stopped operating, and just before redevelopment happened, there was an extensive amount of remediation for, at that particular time, in the late 80s and the 90s, was, was, you know, best in class for what we knew about chlorinated solvents and, and the situation that we had. It's really that residual material that was still in either the groundwater or the soil vapor that has become the problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments up here? Wonderful. Let's go out to public comment on this item. Now here, public comments. Please head on up to the podium, and feel free to speak. And if anyone else is planning on speaking on this item, please feel free, you can line up right there.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor Bloom. Good to see you. My name is Lee Healy. I am the original owner at 92 Hartford Drive, right next to the proposed site for 94. I can tell you, as an original owner, this was developed by J.M. Peters, who did some of the best developments, Belcourt, et cetera, in the, in this area, that there was nothing from the Ford Company when we bought the property about the toxic dumping of chemicals for many, many years. As a matter of fact, I sent to Jenny Tran two links from the Los Angeles Times with 33 years in between them. One was dated January 14th, 1990, and it stated that Ford Plant in Dearborn, Michigan, which is where their headquarters are, long abandoned the property before it sold, that there was, they did not keep it up to speed, they did not do improvements, and that it was well-known that there was chemical dumping there, which, as an original owner, we were never apprised of. Yes, the EPA did change the standards in the 90s. But we've lived there, I mean, it's like, you know, since 19, I bought in 1985. Our daughter was born there. She has health issues. My husband has, had cancer. So we don't know. But really, what we're here about is today, is the location of, of the shed that's, that's proposed. The reason there's been overwhelming support from the community is just human nature. If it's not by your house, people walk by the announcements, they don't even read them. The three residences that are so close, it's really a health issue. In March of this year, the Los Angeles Times had another issue. These, these toxic chemicals have been known to cause cancer. But there also now is links to Parkinson's, and the physicians say, when, and I sent Jenny the links, that when they see a bunch of Parkinson's, and they go and they see that these kind of areas need remediation, and that they have been chemical exposures. Pipes can leak. I mean, if, if they have thousands and thousands of examples of residences that have these kind of structures and processes going on, why didn't we see them? Why did we see something from a military base in the 90s? This, the appeals have been going on for months. It would be so easy to prove and give us peace of mind where, where these have existed, and that everything is, is working out fine. And it could be two years. I mean, we don't know. It could be longer. We, we have to find out. But it's really a health issue and safety for those residents who are close to where this proposal is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Enrique Sanchez, mayor and city council members. I'm president of the HOA over at Bay Ridge, and also one of the 22 that's been affected by the vapor intrusion. I know they, one of the solutions was the air purifiers, which really didn't work out. They were extremely loud. We couldn't even talk in our residences. So that was really not a solution. So the next solution is what we're proposing now. And I think we need to look at the science in real perspective, because I think the information has not been disseminated properly, or accepted properly, perhaps, is a better way to say it. Because the safety issue isn't what's coming out of that building. The safety issue is what's coming out of the ground under my house, and 22 other people that are affected, and others that have not come forward to have been tested. That's where the safety issue is. This building, being approximate to 94, can only be seen if you're in one window, looking out to look at this vent. What's coming out of that vent is going to be monitored by the US government to meet standards. So this is not a safety issue for the 94, for the residents of 94, or even anybody around there. Hope that's clear. The real health risk is not getting the system in place. So waiting another two years to get the system in place is a health risk that's, comes down on me, my family, and all the other residents. The other thing I want to mention is, 168 buildings, we have residences there. And I can tell you, over 70 residents have my personal cell phone number. All of them, I have never had anybody give me a negative comment regarding the system. They're all asking me, when is this going to happen? The other thing is, I never even heard of 94, or the residents, until the 11th hour. I've moved, moved in in 2018. I've been the president since 2019. They never showed up at any meetings. They've never, I've had residents knock on my door if they're concerned about something. So they've, could have been there at step one, and gone through the same journey, had the same information. But I, I'm really seeing that they're misinformed. Again, because they're not the ones being put at a health risk. It's the people with the intrusion, right? There's a building that's going to be put, or we'd like to see put, near a house that is an inconvenience for a year, that's going to be emitted, emitting gases that have been treated with double filters. And if the system, they were talking about a pipe breaking, I understand if a pipe breaks, the system shuts down. So there's so many safety checks in the system, that they're not at risk. I just want to make that clear. They're not at risk. We're at risk. And so if there's any other questions, I can answer them. If not, I'd thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, honorable council members. Ryan Farsie again. I do have a condo in Belcourt Park, and I spent many of conversations with this Jessica Law. And, long story short, I even went further and requested the public records for the satellite images from 1950, 1960, 1970, 1980, 1990, 2005, 2012. So I could see where they put the buildings, where they put their parking lots, because I'm in the business of cleaning properties that are contaminated. And I have a lot of friends that are, have a lot of contaminated properties on the East Coast. They've been cleaning for decades, 20, 30 years. I personally think something like this, when I was looking at it with the gentleman right here... here, we looked at it in detail, I told him, okay, here's the property, here's the buildings. What they do is they specifically, they take these contaminate, contaminated bins and they put it in the corners of the properties. So, if you looked at this stuff in detail, like I did, you'll see where this contamination is moving underneath the soil. It's underneath the post office and it's moving towards the upper Newport Bay. This is your responsibility to figure out how to do something in front of it. So, in, in order to be a good chess player, you have to see like 12 steps ahead. That's what's happening, it's sliding down. So, it's sliding this way towards the corner of Ford and Jamboree across the street from Our Lady Queen of Angels. It didn't slide towards Belcourt where we are, they actually had a testing site right in front of my driveway to the left between my home and the condo next to mine. So, what I would say to you is this process started in 2018, when they started telling everyone about, hey, by the way, this hundred acre property that's turned into this beautiful community is Belcourt and 1 Ford Road and all these little enclave, smaller condominium, that they're contaminated and so on and so forth. So, here we are five years later and they're about to put something into place. Personally, I think it's like, to put it in perspective, it's like someone has been shot with a bullet and instead of taking the bullet out, Mr. O'Neill, and then using, using stitches to seal them up, what they're doing is basically giving a Band-Aid to this setup. So, this Band-Aid is, is only for one year, but I recommend that you guys approve it. I personally think it's going to be needing at least 20, 30 years to clean it up. And more importantly, I think you should stop it from getting into the bay where it's sliding down where the kids are playing in the playground down there below, because that's the real slope. The hundred acres is sitting on top and it's sliding down and the biggest slope is towards the bay on the right side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Larry Conno, married to Lee Healy, lived at 92 Hartford since about 86. First I heard of any pollution, contamination, toxic problems was in 2018. Raised a family on the property. Had I known in 87 that we were living over a toxic dump, I, I would have got the family out. As a consequence, personally, I have three different medical issues that could be attributed to long-term exposure. Maybe a little over a long time is worse than a lot all at once. But here we are in 2023, we need to clean it up. It's a big issue, it's, I don't think two years of running a shed next to our property is going to do much, but it's a start. I would just ask that that shed be moved somewhere where we're not still breathing the exhaust fumes that are coming out of this and being asked to trust that basically the same folks that caused the problem are cleaning it up properly. Heard a lot of opinion here, haven't heard it from any real scientists that are health, safety experts that can give us the real analysis on, is it safe to be living and breathing next to this, this needed SVE site? I think it would be more prudent to move it away from people, just err on the side of a caution, because if you're wrong, then we're going to, and other, others of us in this area are going to continue to be breathing these toxic chemicals. I heard earlier that it was common practice to dump chemicals into the ground in the 50s and 60s. I don't know if that's true or not. I suspect that it's not the best thing for health and safety of human beings. So, I would just ask that we maybe take a deep breath and make sure that we're doing the right thing before we subject other people to possible harm, okay? That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
Mayor Blum, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. First of all, at the beginning of the hearing, it was refreshing to hear the disclosure of ex parte communications. But for your information, I wanted to point out that I believe the purpose of disclosing ex parte communications, which is if someone outside of the hearing has tried to speak to you, is number one, so that all the decision makers will have the same information, number two, so all the participants in the hearing will know what information you're basing your decision on. And third, and perhaps most importantly, if off-camera you heard something that was incorrect, that the participants have a chance to rebut or counter that information. And simply saying that you hadn't ex parte communication with Mr. Connor or whoever does not achieve any of those purposes, because we do not know what he may have told you and whether he told you the same thing as he told you here at the hearing. So, the, the best advice when asked to participate in an ex parte communication is simply to say no, as apparently a couple of the council people did. Beyond that, I don't have much to say, except I'm still unclear on how much the power is needed for this equipment naively, as I said in writing. Could it be solar powered? Do you actually need all of this conduit going to it? Is it heavy machinery? Is it like using as much power as 10 houses would use or one house or a refrigerator? I don't know how big the equipment is that's in there. And then second, I think there may have been some miscommunication about the question about if nothing is done right now, will this just get worse? I thought I was hearing the question, will the vapor get worse and worse? I think what Mr. Connor was saying is the longer this goes on, the people there will be exposed for longer, so they will have, their exposure will get worse with time. But I think the amount of vapor coming out of the ground, the very long-range picture of that, as I think Mr. Farsie was trying to say, is the contamination is gradually going to spread out and so a much larger area is going to be affected by it, but at lower levels. And presumably, if nothing at all was done, the people at this location will have a long-term exposure, but over time it will eventually dissipate. I don't think they're actually taking the contaminant out of the ground, but just some of the vapor that's coming from the contaminant. I could be wrong about that, I'm not a scientific expert on that. But anyway, there may be some confusion about what it getting worse with time meant. Thank you.
Any other public speakers on this? Mayor Protem, did you want to say something?
Yeah. It's a bad situation all around and unfortunately, sometimes when it comes up to us and we're dealing with a bad situation all around, we're going to be disappointing some folks and there's just no getting around that. And so, when we're trying to figure out how to make the right decision in a, in a bad situation, it's important to go back to what we're, what we're, what exactly we're being asked to deal with. And so, when I read through Exhibit A and the discussion about the findings in support of the limited term permit, and to Mr. Moser's point, in my meeting, I heard nothing different than what was told today and frankly, based none of my decisions off of what I had heard in that meeting, because I based it off of what I read in the packets and then what we've been hearing today. But I, I read through every word, every line of Exhibit A's findings in support of limited term permit, in addition as well, the conditions of approval for Exhibit B. I could find no statement in Exhibit A that I disagreed with in terms of where, what the findings were, or the facts in support of each finding. And because of that, I come to the conclusion that I'm going to have to deny the appeal, but I do so understanding the frustration that doing so is going to cause to the homeowners and for that, I am sorry. But on this situation, it's legally the right thing to do. So, I appreciate the discussion here.
And I'm going to bring it back up here, but let's, I'm just going to give the applicant another five minutes if they wanted to say something else or have some rebuttal, is that okay with you, Councilmember Climen, before you talk? Thanks.
I did want to start out by saying that throughout our complaints, throughout our emails to everybody, we never opposed the treatment, we just opposed the actual location of it. And then as far as us not contacting, contacting the HOA, we sent three comprehensive emails asking what decisions they were going to make on, let's see, March 1st, May 17th, and June 6th, and the only response we got was that the, basically they were going to make the decision and that was it. We weren't allowed to contact the HOA directly. I know, I understand 70 people have his phone number, but we have to contact the property manager and then the property manager contacts them. We asked them for direct contact and they said no. So, we're not just going to go knock on his door. I wouldn't do that to anybody. And then the, as for the planning commission, none of them agreed about the power drop. The power drop was only the issue in one of the locations at that northwest, I believe the northwest corner on the corner of Jamboree and Bison. The power drop shouldn't be an issue for any of the other locations, as far as I remember from the alternative analysis that were provided. It wasn't convenient that I used those three locations, those were what they gave us. We continuously asked for data and we continuously asked for residential examples and that's what we were given. And when we said, hey, is there anything else? I believe we were first given the two dry cleaners. And then when we asked for more, that's when we got a email or a website for the military base. Digging into it further, we found that picture somewhere throughout that website showing the, the military base, the shutdown location. Also, talking about the two and a half, two, two and a half years it's going to take to relocate, they've known about our objections since January, possibly a little bit before that, and here we are. We've wasted six months already. Lastly, it's, I've been saying it the whole time, it's, it's not right to put it three feet from anyone's building. Like it was brought up already, we're not the homeowners anymore, but I'm still here talking on behalf of the people, the new homeowners, because that's what I feel is the right thing to do. I wouldn't want to sell it to them and then just kind of stick them with it and stop fighting for it. Also, I did want to bring up one last thing, sorry. There's, they keep saying that it's only the 22 homes that are at risk and there's this continuous monitoring. I believe the monitoring, it's not real-time data, it's not saying if there's an issue, there's someone out there to stop it. The fumes that are coming out of the exhaust, it gets tested, about two weeks later they find out. So, whoever's living in the house now, they could be breathing in toxic fumes for approximately two weeks, because one of the filters breaks down. I'm not saying a crack in the pipe that shuts the whole vacuum system down, but if the filter breaks and it's just spewing out fumes, toxic fumes, two weeks later, they'll say, oh, by the way, hope you had your window shut. But that's all. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And likely, if the applicant would like to say anything else, you're more than welcome to. Perfect. We'll bring it back up here. Mayor Protem?
Yeah. Sorry, it looked like, I, I apologize, I thought the public comments was, were done when I made my comments, so, yeah. Anyway, having, having heard that and I do appreciate the, the discussion, I think that my comments still stand, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Climen?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to start by echoing Mayor Protem O'Neill's sentiment. Nothing about this situation is ideal and of course, for that, I too am sorry. If my family's home were impacted, I would certainly have the same concerns that the applicants have raised and be availing myself of the appeal process. That said, these mitigation efforts have been ongoing for years. I believe that Ford's consultants have done the necessary due diligence and community engagement. And as we've heard, in the meantime, at least 22 homes of those who have allowed testing have ongoing vapor intrusion inside their homes. At this point, I am sufficiently satisfied that there was no viable alternative location for this facility when this process began and that the exterior emissions risk to adjacent residents is essentially negligible, but at least at a minimum substantially less than the conditions that exist inside these homes today. And Ford has offered to relocate some of those concerned residents. Bottom line for me is that these remediation efforts cannot afford to be delayed any longer.
Thank you. Councilmember Wigan?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Climen and Mayor Protem O'Neill's statements and I wanted just to add, and maybe for the council's interest, as Councilmember Climen had said, if this were her property, she would be doing the exact same thing and appealing this. So, you know, this address kind of drew a bad round of cards or dice or whatever you'd want to say when it comes to this. And I'd like to see if we could possibly, I think, I think that the, the votes are there for approving this project, approving this site to do the remedying of the, of the gases. But seeing that there was an appeal, there is a significant cost associated with appealing that and being denied that appeal just adds further salt in the wounds to, to something that affects your personal property. If this were, were me, I would be pretty upset. So, I'm just asking this council to see if we could possibly waive those fees associated with appealing this decision and the rejection coming from us will associate costs to them, but I think if we can have it so kind in our hearts to throw back those dollars that they expended. So, I'm not sure if that's something that's possible or this council's willing to do so, but that would be my comment, says I will support the, the application of this moving forward.
Aaron, can we refund the applica, appeal fee? It's never happened, but I actually think that's, that's fair in this one.
Yeah, so the municipal code does provide that the council can waive the fee set forth in the fee resolution.
Yeah. I, I think, I agree. So, given it's your idea, Councilmember Wigan, you're welcome to make the motion. I'd second it or I can make the motion right off the bat?
Yeah, you go with the motion. I guess I'll say.
Well, before you do that, we, I would suggest that.
Yeah, maybe there's some other further.
You do it for both appeals, because it was appealed twice, so there were two, right?
Yeah. That's what I would like.
All the appeal fees?
Yes. Yeah, okay. So, I'm going to make a, I just point out, this is very much not precedent for doing that. This is just such a one-off situation, but I do agree on this one. So, I'm going to make a motion to go with staff recommendation with the additional direction that appeal fees be waived and if already collected, returned.
And I'll second.
Wonderful. We're closing the public hearing. Let's go ahead and we have a motion in a second, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Moving on to item 11, which has been pulled, we're going to move on to item 12. Item 12, ordinance number 2023-13, amendment to Newport Place Plan, Community Development Plan to Revise the Minimum Affordability Housing Percentage of the Residential Overlay. Do any council members have a conflict regarding this item?
I have a conflict because of my interest in the Pacific Club.
I have the same conflict and then because item number 13 will be the last item, I have a conflict in item number 13 due to my residence being within the geographic area of the impact.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Do we have a brief staff report on this? Can be as brief as you need it to be. Brief. Okay. This is an amendment to the Newport Place Plan, Community Development Plan, and it, real quick, that's Newport Place up in the airport area, highlighted in red. The area highlighted in gray, that is the residential overlay, and within those regulations is an inclusionary requirement for 30% of the homes to be for lower-income households. You know, we studied this, we did a study session with the city council last year. 30% is too high, and at the direction of the city council to revisit this question and proposed amendment would reduce that percentage to 15%, which is consistent with the housing element, it assists us in housing production, and it's consistent with the analysis that Kaiser Marsch and prepared in 2022. So, planning commission reviewed this item and did approve it. We also went to the Airport Land Use Commission, they did find it consistent with the Airport Environment's land use plan, and with a public hearing this evening, we recommend that you approve the ordinance and introduce it and waive for reading and take it to adoption at the next meeting. Wonderful. Thank you for that. Any comments up here from the dais to begin? Excellent. Councilmember Avery?
So going forward and beyond this project in the airport area where there's most of our gains to be made toward our arena numbers, going from 30 to 15 is not ideally what we wanted in terms of generating more affordable units, but the market is just telling us this is not really feasible in terms of what's going on out there and the property prices.
That is indeed what we're learning. When we had Kaiser Marsch examine this, the percentage that they felt would be feasible and that most projects could accommodate is actually lower than this. 15% can be achieved and is, we feel, is financially feasible using the density bonus provisions, and so we feel that this, you know, in essence eliminates an impediment to housing production. Yes, we do need to produce more affordable housing, you know, our regional housing needs assessment is significantly skewed towards affordable units, but if the percentage inclusion is too high, then we won't have any production, and we really can't be that jurisdiction as well. So we feel this is an appropriate recommendation.
But it does make it harder for us to achieve our state-mandated goal.
Right. I think on the affordable housing production side, yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Just real quickly, this is not the entire housing overlay, it's just this one segment, right? So 30% remains on another portion?
So the city does not have an inclusionary housing requirement citywide. This is the only area in Newport Place that does have an inclusionary requirement, and it would only apply in the geography that I showed you, that grade hatching area. It wouldn't apply anywhere else in the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no comments up here, let's go out to public on this one. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Blom, my name is Jim Mosher, and to build on what Councilmember Avery said, it could be mistaken, but I believe in the recently adopted housing element, which projected we would need like 10,000 new housing units to meet our arena requirement, and the 10,000 is not even counting the bonus units, those 10,000 would have to be about 30% affordable. And this is the only place in Newport Beach currently with the requirement to be 30% affordable. If we don't think 30% is realistic, then the 10,000 is not realistic. And I don't think, I don't know where we think the affordable units are going to go now if they can't go here. This seems kind of intuitively where the most affordable things would be built. I really doubt that there are going to be affordable units built around the harbor, waterfront, locations with piers, they're not likely to be affordable. So this really seems, I would be skeptical about the conclusion that this is not feasible. We do have a project there that Newport Crossings, that I think has, the lot has been demolished, and the developer is supposedly building a project there, 300 units or something, with 30% affordable and some bonus units for that. Maybe they found that they can't do it, I don't know, maybe it's going to be a vacant lot, but if we don't require 30% somewhere, and we thought we were going to do that citywide, I mean, how many units are we talking about now? I would stick with what you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Wonderful. We'll bring this back up here. Councilmember Avery?
It's maddening to be given such a mandate to build so many units when clearly it's for this town. I won't say, use the word impossible, but it is just extremely challenging, given the price of real estate, and I think it's biased against coastal cities, the whole arena plan in the state of California, and it's, it's not right. So we're, and the cities, we are on time with our plan, we're covering all the things we can cover here, and we're trying to build, of course, more ADUs, all the rest of it, but it's just not going to happen, we're not going to meet that number. I'd love to meet it, maybe we can, but it just doesn't, mathematically, it just doesn't work, there just isn't the land to do it. And it's, the most important thing is, there's not the market to do it. As I've said before, people investing in real estate, and they, there's such risk, any project you tee up on a size like this, you have to see, you have to see a really strong upside to do it, because these are folks that are going to getting funding, and they need returns, and so the market, the market will just decide this for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments up here, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have a motion on this. Motion by Councilmember Wagon, and a second, seconded by Councilmember Climon. Wonderful, let's vote.
All right, I'm reading the vote. I'll read the ordinance, Title IV, ordinance 2023-13, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving Newport Place Plan, Community Development Plan Amendment with Mayor Protam O'Neill and Councilmember Stapleton recusing themselves. The motion carries 5-0.
Great. Moving on to Item 13, and Councilmember Stapleton is making his way back up. This is Resolution Number 2023-44 and 2023-45, collection of certain sewer and recycling fees and charges through the property tax roll. Do any, we already, Mayor Protam already announced his conflict on this. We have a staff report.
Yes, we do have a short presentation for you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman, Michael Gomez, Deputy Finance Director. The item before you is a public hearing regarding the collection of certain recycling and sewer rates on the property tax bill. This is the second consecutive year that this item is being brought forward to the council, and we'll get right into it. So what we have is a small subset of our overall recycling and sewer accounts. This is a very small percentage. In total, we're looking at about 5,000 accounts of approximately 40,000 accounts that we have relating to these services. When we talk about these accounts of why this item is coming before you, is that over the past few years, there have been some difficulty in the collections on the subset of accounts. The issues that we find are that we don't have a good mechanism to collect on any delinquent accounts. It's very different from accounts that have water, sewer, and recycling all in one bill. We have an ability to shut off the water service for non-payment, but on the sewer-only, recycling-only accounts, we don't have that same capability. So oftentimes, we resort to the historical processes of sending out reminder notices or having balances moved forward, or even possibly sending them off to collections. But when we do that, the amount that we can often collect is a smaller percentage of what the bill actually is. Last fiscal year, the item came before the city council to place the sewer-only, recycling-only accounts on the property tax bill. I would consider the program to be a success. Last year, when this item came before you on the sewer-only and recycling-only bills, we were collecting about 83% on the recycling side and about 75% on the sewer side. With the year just closing up, I happen to report that the collections through the county has increased to over 97% collection for all of these accounts. It's our recommendation that the city continue to collect these fees on the property tax roll, conduct a public hearing, and adopt the resolutions allowing the city to forward this information to the Orange County Department and have them collected on the tax roll.
Excuse me, Mayor, I actually have a conflict on this matter. That, I don't? Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Yeah, I double-checked all your properties, it's not a part of this.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Any comments up here? No, let's jump on out to public comment then.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, as the, I guess all of the council members know, I have a problem with the city collecting the recycling fee at all, I don't think it should be charging that, but as to the issue that's before you tonight, I have no problem collecting it on the property tax bill, but I do question in the presentation the statement that the city does not have the alternative of terminating the service for those who don't pay for it. I can understand that with sewers, which is a small part of the list that you have here, because there is no valve to turn off the sewer connection, there's no easy one to do that, but the great bulk of these, almost all of this, has to do with the recycling fee, which is related to residential trash collection, and I don't really understand why the city could not tell CRNR simply not to collect the trash at the delinquent residences and cause those people to have to pay for that collection on their own somehow. So I don't have a problem with it being on the property tax bill, but I don't understand why CRNR could not skip an address that was delinquent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? I think we'll bring it back up here. Seeing nothing else from the dais, wonderful. Got a motion on this. Motion by Councilmember Stapleton, and seconded by Councilmember Climon. Wonderful, let's vote.
With Mayor Protam O'Neill recusing himself, the motion carried 6-0.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Wonderful. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.